Thanks to technology.
Yeah. Good morning and welcome to the September 8, 2014 workshop of the Orlando City Council. So if you have devices that ring during the course of meetings, I'd ask that you silence them or put them on vibrate. So Commissioners, earlier this year, we had two new transportation network companies, that's a new term of art, which began operating in the city of Orlando, and since that time, city staff has been meeting with industry representatives from the companies that have been operating here for decades, and also the new transportation network companies. We've been researching the way other cities have been handling that, and I thought it would be appropriate to remind us exactly what Chapter 55 is all about, which is our vehicle for hire industry ordinance. And I'm going to call on Byron Brooks to start our presentation and tell us where we're headed with this workshop.
Good morning, and thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to just set the stage a bit for the work session this morning. First, the backdrop. The city of Orlando has been regulating the vehicle for hire industry since a little over thirty-some-odd years, I believe, since around 1983. And it was determined at that time there was a public interest for doing so, the primary factors being public safety, especially in a region with such a strong international tourism presence, and then second, equal access, be it geographical access or be it for persons with disabilities. The vehicle for hire industry, same as every other business sector and well as every other aspect of our lives, has certainly witnessed advances in technology and changing expectations from their consumers and the public. And we live in a time that consumers are seeking more options and convenience in just about every aspect of their lives. Accordingly, we revisit our regulations on occasions, just as we did, as you recall, to recognize emergence and need for sustainability and environmentally friendly vehicles in service. So we review them occasionally to determine if certain aspects of the service should evolve to reflect consumer interest in changing times as well. The key point for the city of Orlando, though, has always been to ensure that we balance those fundamental core principles of public safety and access, public access, in any changes that we consider. So for today, and as backdrop for today's work session, as the mayor mentioned several months ago, the mayor tasked us with engaging the industry, the vehicle for hire industry, as well as interested parties, to have open dialogue about changes that we saw occurring in different localities across the country, changes that we're hearing about from consumers in this marketplace as well, asking about service. And so we did that. First, we conducted an open industry forum back in June. We invited all interested parties and noticed all who were currently permit holders, and we had a session, over a hundred folks attended that session, be they limousine drivers, taxi-cab drivers, just a wide mix of interested parties. All in attendance were given an opportunity to comment if they so desired. And we listened and we heard, and that session lasted for more than an hour. Further, we invited those who were in attendance than any other party to provide us any written comments if they desired, to share with us any additional thoughts, ideas that they wanted to provide via email, and so we asked them to send those to our vehicle for hire office or our city attorney's office. A few people responded and provided some general comments, and we read those. Three companies provided us very detailed, in-depth proposals related to Chapter 55. Accordingly, we met with those companies, those companies being Uber, Lyft, and Mears. We had separate meetings with each of them to further discuss the information that they submitted, so we had a better understanding of what was being shared, as well as to continue the dialogue. And that brings us to the work session today in this agenda. As Mayor Dyer indicated in his June memo to you, our task was to do the research, and I think you'll be quite impressed with the research done, especially and most notable, I want to single out Deputy City Attorney Jody Litcheridge. She has become our resident expert, and we're just kidding, I truly believe may stand as one of the most knowledgeable in this area now, across the state if not country. So I'm really highlighting her here, building her up, but she's done extensive amount of work in this area. The good news for you Commissioners is she's going to condense that down into a few key considerations for you this morning. We'll start with Deputy Chief Pigman presenting an overview of Chapter 55, just an opportunity for us to all get current on exactly and sound of fundamental understanding exactly what Chapter 55 covers, what it governs, and why. And then Jody, Deputy State Attorney Jody Litcheridge, will present on the transportation network companies and the ideas for your consideration. I will then come back and we'll talk a bit about some suggested next steps, and at that point, we'll be ready for your questions and comments. We sent it this session more for your purposes, for purposes above, sharing information with city council, for getting your comments, your questions, as opposed to an open dialogue. We've had opportunities for the open dialogue, and then we'll talk about that a little later more, but today, this morning, I did send it more for your purposes. So with that, so here's the lineup, and we'll call on Deputy Chief Pigman to proceed and... Messing you up here, okay.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My mission today is just to go over the basics of Chapter 55 as it exists today. And we'll begin with the definition of a vehicle for hire. That includes any passenger vehicle engaged in the transportation of persons from or entirely within the municipal limits of Orlando with the intent to receive direct or indirect compensation for providing such transportation, including providers which only accept gratuities or tips. In our current configuration or classifications, there are basically two classifications, including the taxi-cab, which is chauffeur-driven, a passenger vehicle, automobile, station wagon, or van, that is capable of comfortably seating at least four adult passengers, up to a maximum of nine adult passengers, including the driver, transporting persons not on a regular schedule, and routes traveled or the destination determined by the passengers. And under the luxury or limo vehicles, is also chauffeur-driven, a passenger vehicle recognized by the industry as a full-size luxury passenger vehicle, including vintage or classic passenger vehicles with a seating maximum of eight, including the driver. Regarding fares, under taxi-cab, the fare is charged based on the use of the vehicle without regard to the number of passengers, no matter if it's one or four, it's the same cost. It's determined by meter, and it's also provides service, taxi-cabs provide service, and answer calls to all parts of the city 24/7, 365. They are required to operate a staff 24-hour call center, and they're also required to have 10 percent fleet designated for disabled access. We do have a limited number of cabs that operate within the city, and that's based on the public necessity formula. And then, under luxury and limo vehicles, regarding the fare, determined on an hourly basis and not by a meter or mileage for the use of the vehicle, leased, rented, or charged upon for the minimum time period of one hour, 60 minutes, with a minimum charge of currently $35 for the first hour. It's pre-arranged or arranged through a third party, could be guest services or call ahead. No current limit on the number of luxury vehicles. In order to lawfully operate a vehicle for hire within the city of Orlando, you must have a vehicle permit. The initial application is $500, and there's a $300 annual renewal fee. Drivers must also be permitted. It costs $25 to be permitted as a driver, and they must undergo a background check, which is an additional $25. Additionally, to operate as a entity for vehicles for hire, you must have a business tax receipt. In terms of enforcement, we have two categories, administrative, where if we issue a notice of violation, it could result in suspension or revocation of permits, and under civil, if we issue a citation, there could be a fine assessment. For us, it's all about safety, and in regards to the drivers, again, the background checks, driving history, criminal history, and currently, we employ FCIC, which is contracted out to Florida Department of Law Enforcement. And again, safety of the vehicles, ensuring that the proper insurance coverage is current on all vehicles, and vehicles are inspected to make sure that they are indeed roadworthy. It also involves equal treatment for all passengers, and our effort is to minimize discrimination, so taxi-cab companies are required to service all areas of the cities of the city, every nook from Osceola County line all the way up to Rosemont, and everything in between must be served. Service to all individuals, that includes the elderly woman or gentleman that needs just to go to the corner drugstore to pick up a prescription, which might be a small fare, but taxi-cabs are required to pick those folks up and service them. Also, accessibility, they must operate 24/7, 365, holidays included, must have wheelchair-accessible cabs to transport the disabled, and they must have fair pricing. It's based on meters, which is tied to the Consumer Price Index, no surge pricing, no matter if it's rain or shine, holiday, or special event, it's all the same price. And so now we have the new technology, transportation network companies, also known as TNCs, also known as peer-to-peer ride-sharing or technology-based ride-sharing, who use online booking apps. What they have, or the companies provide online apps, the passengers use the online app, entering their location for the pickup, drivers respond to that location and dispatch and pick up the passenger and take them where they want to go. So with more about the new technology and transportation network companies, I'll turn it over to Jody Litcheridge.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm completely overbilled, by the way, so I'm not an expert on this industry at all, but I'll do the best I can. We've been trying to sort through it for the last couple of months, and first, I can tell you that there are three major companies operating now. I think that picture is likely to change, and rapidly. I've heard there's a fourth entrant in New York City as of last week called GETT, G-E-T-T. But I think that we're seeing a rapidly evolving industry and changes in transportation modalities. In Orlando, so far, we have only heard from Uber and Lyft as companies who wish to operate in the city of Orlando, and as Byron indicated, a team from the city, including Deputy Chief Pigman and his staff from the police department, have met with, and Byron and his staff and I have met with all of the Uber and the Lyft who have asked to come in and operate in the city. As Deputy Chief Pigman said, all of the people that we know of connect potential passengers to potential drivers via an electronic means called, they're using now apps on smartphones. All of the new companies handle centralized payments, so the drivers aren't accepting cash, they're accepting payments through an account set up through Uber and Lyft, and payments made either via the app and a credit card or via some other economic arrangement. They have several in place that are possible, a PayPal-type account or an internet-based account are also possible. These alternative transportation modalities, our companies are operating in an estimated 200 cities in the United States and Europe. And I can't tell you, I've read a lot of the ways they're operating in, and they're operating in many, many different ways, sometimes legally and sometimes in a way that is contrary to the existing laws in the community. When they're operating contrary to the existing laws in the community, there's been litigation in many, many jurisdictions, both in the United States and abroad. When they've operated legally within the cities, they've either come into compliance with existing ordinances such as New York City, or they have an agreement, an operating agreement with the city, and that's something they're doing in Detroit, or the cities have modified their ordinances in order to allow these transportation networking companies to operate legally. But there isn't that I can find a solution in any city where all aspects of the transportation companies and the communities are happy. Now, that may be just a question of time, as this shakes out, because it's a very new industry, but you definitely find somebody or other is unhappy, either the traditional metered cab industry is unhappy, the traditional metered cab drivers are unhappy, the app-based ride-sharing companies are unhappy, or the community is unhappy, or the legislators are unhappy, and there is a ton of litigation going on all across the country as a result of this. Here in Orlando, we are pretty highly regulated in the metered cab industry. As Deputy Chief Pigman set out, we set the fares, we put a cap on the number of metered cabs that can operate in the city. We require not only the safety things that we think are critical in the community, but we also require convenience things, things that will ensure that all, every element of our city is served, and that's the dispatch center on a 24/7 basis and requiring 10 percent of the fleet to be able to accommodate mobility-impaired individuals. And these are things that have a cost, of course, so our current metered cab industry operates within an environment where there are a lot of restrictions. The ride-sharing companies currently are not legal in the city of Orlando. They are vehicles for hire. The ones that are operating now have not obtained permits, either for their drivers or their vehicles. And they would urge and encourage, I think, pretty much deregulation. Now, that's the environment that the companies would be happiest in. Not that they're not going to be self-regulating, and I think that you'll find, if you explore the companies, you will find that they have a lot of internal mechanisms because they don't want to be sued, they don't want to be liable, so they do have insurance, and they do their own driving, driver background checks, at least the big companies are doing that now. They're doing some sort of vehicle inspection, at least the big companies are doing that now, but it's, so I think that ride-sharing networks would be happiest in a deregulated environment where they're regulating themselves. Currently, of course, well, that's an option. So it's always an option for council. It's an option for council to deregulate. I would suspect that it's not a viable economic option for council to regulate heavily a metered cab industry and deregulate a non-metered industry, because you would have nobody probably operating in your metered industry, because why take on that expense if you don't have to? But that's just a consideration for council. So we've met with everyone, and we've talked about how might we remove barriers that would be sensible barriers to remove in order that alternative transportation modalities could operate in some fashion in the city. And so I want to talk to you about some of the changes we've explored with everyone in the industry. The top one would be to add a new class of vehicles for hire. Currently, we have, of course, the metered industry and the non-metered industry, but the non-metered industry has minimums for the type of vehicle, has to be either a limousine or a luxury passenger vehicle. So one of the changes we could make is to allow vehicles for hire to be regular passenger vehicles capable of seating four passengers and a driver, a normal sedan, so that maybe the cost of operating that type of vehicle is not as expensive. Requiring a driver background to include NCIC, and this actually is just, is a requirement that the police department would like to impose. We're currently only checking drivers under the, through the Florida information system, FCIC, and we'd like to do a national check. One of the things we could do is to allow that background check, and we contract it out now, to be done by the companies within certain strictures, and we just get the proof, you know, some evidence of that, and the police department thinks that we could all work together to make sure that the evidence is satisfactory and that those checks are being done appropriately by a company who's checking both FCIC and NCIC. Continue to require vehicle inspection, we now do require vehicle inspection. Companies that have more than 25 cars can do that themselves, they don't have to go through, and we contract that out also. They don't have to go through one of our contractual providers, they can provide that vehicle inspection through an ASE-certified mechanic, and we could continue to open up that vehicle inspection through ASE-certified mechanics. Insurance has been a big bugaboo and hotly contentious all over the country, but that again is an evolving area, and I think in the early days, many of these rideshare companies were providing what was called excess coverage. A driver who has a normal personal auto insurance policy who drives, then drives someone for hire usually falls into an exclusion on their personal insurance coverage. So if they were to have an accident while they were transporting someone for hire, their personal insurance would probably decline. Initially, the ride-sharing companies were providing excess coverage, but excess coverage only picks up at the limits of the personal coverage, so if the personal coverage was declined, the excess coverage wouldn't work either. But that's changed, and I think the rideshare industry is now providing first-dollar coverage. They're providing it, I understand both companies to be providing it from the time a driver accepts a ride, so while they're in transit to the ride, when they've picked up the fare, until they discharge the fare. Both companies, as I understand it, have a million-dollar policy in place. The great thing for the city of Orlando is that this really doesn't have to be a controversial issue in Orlando, because Orlando has just adopted the state law requirements, and so vehicles for hire are required to purchase insurance, the insurance that's required by the state, and the state has a $300,000 combined single limit policy required of all vehicles for hire. So ordinance really just references the state law in that regard. Currently, our ordinance requires advanced booking for non-metered vehicles for hire. And we can, and one of the changes we've talked about is to make it clear that an electronic app constitutes an advance booking. That would be a modest change to our ordinance that would allow booking by electronic apps of non-metered vehicles. And I don't know why I don't have it here. Another change would be to limit the, I guess, and no advance booking time would go along with that. We think as a staff that, and no provider was, had any problem with our prohibiting discrimination in service, either geographically or by any other, for any other reason, and we would, we would think that it was important to keep that prohibition in place and perhaps make it stronger. Some of the companies have suggested that they might be able to be audited in this regard. I'm not sure how difficult or not it would be to do that, but everyone says that they will not discriminate in the provision of services, and will agree to that clause. Finally, the minimum fare. Our current minimum fare for non-metered vehicles is $35, well, a minimum hour, and it's $35 an hour. That fare was increased some years ago, and I can't remember, maybe five years ago, from $25. So taking a look at the minimum fare is a thing that we've identified, everyone's identified as something that needs or could be considered by council. The ride-sharing companies would prefer no minimum fare or a very modest minimum fare. And so that's, that's an area to look at, and that's an area that other cities around the nation have looked at in terms of, in terms of this area. There are some other changes that we've, that we kind of came up with or were proposed in the course of meeting with both the metered industry and the non-metered industry, and I've just got some of these for you here. They relate more to cabs, or at least the first one. We talked about deleting the requirement of posting rates outside the vehicle, and that's just a request from the metered cab industry, so their vehicles will look a little nicer, perhaps, and the posted rates would remain inside the vehicle. To remove the restriction on hailing taxis, we don't allow taxis to be hailed downtown. You cannot do what you do in New York. So there's been some suggestion that we might remove that restriction. We do require there to be a top light on taxis, showing whether they're occupied or not occupied, even though you can't hail one anyway. So if you can't hail them, the suggestion is that we remove the requirement for the top light, it's just a small expense that, but we could, it seems to be unnecessary. We do think it's important to require any company who's providing vehicle for hire service in the city to either maintain a local office or a sufficient process for the return of lost property and receipt of complaints. We've talked to all of the companies, we've talked to, the taxi, current taxi companies have that in place, and the vehicles for hire on the ride-sharing mode are willing to come up with a system that will do that. From our law enforcement personnel, we have a request that we, whatever we do, we increase the penalties for non-compliance. Our current penalties for non-compliance are, and they're set out in Chapter 5 of our code, but they're $200 for the first violation and $400 for the second and ensuing violations. And the belief is that we should increase those penalties to the statutory limits, and we're limited to $500. But if we were to do that, we would have more teeth in enforcing whatever ordinance plan that council puts into place. Currently, those penalties and would continue to apply on any permit violation, and there are two required to operate a vehicle for hire in the city. The driver has to be permitted, and the vehicle has to be permitted. So if we were to increase the penalties to $500 per violation, that would be a $1,000 violation, or tickets, the two tickets would be $1,000 for anyone violating our ordinance in the future. And once we have, you know, regulations in place that we want to enforce, then that's the police department's request, that we have the teeth in that enforcement. The things that nobody has suggested there be a change to, though, really none of the companies at all, there's sometimes changes in how they would like, how they would like to do it, but everybody is convinced that we need to, you know, protect, make sure drivers are background checked, that vehicles are safe, that there is insurance in place. So those things seem to be a consensus among all of the folks who wish to provide services within the city, and as I'm sure those are the things that are critically important to you all. The rest of it, how we do it, are things that we think we can work with and maintain safety, and that would be important. So we would, and so the police department is looking at their processes to see what will meet their level of comfort, that the people driving vehicles for hire within the city of Orlando are safe, and that people can get in those vehicles with some confidence. So that's kind of the overview of what we've done and what we've learned, and I'm going to turn it back over to Byron for next steps.
Byron, just before we do that, does anybody, I'm going to set you up for questions, Jody, but I'm also going to alert either Phil or Marco that even though I have not asked you guys to present at this, I'm going to ask you to present, and just tell us how this discussion affects the airport, because everybody might not know the system in terms of vehicles for hire picking up at the airport. So after we do questions with Jody. Commissioner Sheen?
Mayor, I have a question about the top light and the hailing. If you do, if you do with the, because I mean, I've taken cabs in other cities where, you know, where you can hail, and you can tell if it's available by the top light. So if you get rid of, so if you're going to allow hailing, how do you get rid of the top light?
I think you do one or the other, I suspect.
Okay, right, okay.
Did anybody know that you can't hail in the city of Orlando? Because I have to admit, I did not know that.
Apparently, a lot of people do know that. The metered cab industry, I think, is pretty well aware of it.
Okay. Commissioner Stewart, then Commissioner Hill, then Commissioner Ames.
Couple of quick questions. We talked to them about other types of vehicle identification. I'm not thrilled about having a large pink mustache running around Orlando, but I do think that those who look at these vehicles ought to see some clear identification. You see that on a taxi, you almost imply that on the luxury vehicle, just by the size and nature of the vehicle it is. And that's a concern I have.
Yeah, I think the vision is a person. I think the vision is a permit. The vehicle itself would be permitted and would have some kind of city permit on the vehicle so that it would be in a place that you, as a passenger, would be able to observe that. And I'm sure it would have a number also, so that, you know, it would be a way for you as a passenger to complain.
I would tend, my general thought is I would tend to be a little bit more aggressive. My thought would be that there probably needs to be somehow a front license tag as it approaches. There'd be some license tag. And then the other is that while it's in use, there probably needs to be something on the side of the vehicles. And it could be magnetic, something that would be used that you could place on while it being used, as opposed to being, the idea, the idea of using a vehicle in ride share is that while it's being used, it's identified. And I'm looking at that. Have we addressed, in terms of enforcement, because one of the challenges I have obviously is public safety, have we looked at what other cities are doing in terms of posting rates on the outside? I know that many, many cities, I see some have them, some don't. So taxis generally have an outside.
I've not seen anybody regulate that in the ride share business, mostly because it's pretty hard to do, and they don't have posted rates. They determine their rate via an algorithm that is proprietary. They won't really share it with us, but we get, it's basically based on a time and distance matrix. And then sometimes they increase it if there's a demand basis, if it's raining, if it's outside of show. So they all have their own pricing algorithm, and it is not set. So if you, as a consumer, call one of the ride sharing companies, they will tell you, they work differently. Uber will tell you how much you pay. And then you say, yeah, okay, I agree. And you may have an option from different vehicles or different sizes that have different prices. But you select it on the app, and that's your agreement to pay, and they take it from your credit card. Lyft, as I understand it, works a little differently. They give you a suggested fare, and then you can either increase it or decrease it at your option if you're satisfied or dissatisfied with the service. But I also understand that if you decrease it, you could decrease it down to zero, but if you did that, you probably wouldn't be getting another ride unless there was a good reason, and they said they'll contact you and say what was the problem. But if you just wanted a free ride, that's probably your last one. So there isn't a way for them really to post rates because they don't have rates. And so I haven't seen that in any other city. I think it's inconsistent with their, you know, their models. They could, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. There's a whole separate issue about, that I have where the, the company can evaluate and rate the passenger. And that concerns me because if you have 24-hour a day, seven days a week coverage, we don't, we don't allow that. The license or franchise to work on our streets says that you're going to pick up 24/7. And the answer is Uber would say they pick up 24/7, but they only pick up based upon when their drivers are available, which the drivers are available in key drive time.
Right.
And the other, so I mean, I think, I don't know how to address that. Because on the other side, at, you know, 12:30 at night, 1 o'clock in the morning, I guess you should say, the drunk driver gets picked up by Mirs because Mirs is required to pick them up. Uber can deny that. I don't know how to delineate between those two. Have we addressed any of that from a discussion with them?
Some jurisdictions have negotiated some kind of audit provision. And so I think that it's conceivable that you could look at who they refuse to pick up, you know, when, when calls are refused or not filled. And you could try and ascertain whether you saw a pattern there that was discriminatory in some fashion that made you concerned. I don't know that that's a perfect mechanism for enforcement of that. So I would really say it's going to be difficult, as you point out, to enforce that.
The last is, and I'm just trying to cover what you have, in terms of penalties, have we looked at what other cities are doing in terms of impounding vehicles that are in violation?
We actually have an impounding ordinance. It needed an appellate route, and so once our appellate route is in, we'll be able to do that. And many other jurisdictions in Florida are impounding.
So the idea is you take it out as a penalty for 48 hours and, you know, I'm sorry you can't get back home, but...
I think if we, you know, were to have two $500 tickets plus an impounded vehicle, that's a pretty significant, I think, would be a pretty significant consideration for anyone who was considering operating illegally in the city.
The last is that it seems to me that when you begin to look across the board in terms of the state definition, that these new companies are considering themselves ride share, and they are not ride share according to the definition.
Not by the state's, they're not a ride share under the state's, our state statute, which defines, you're right, defines it completely different.
They're not taxi, they're not ride share. They fall into, from a definition, because of the vehicle for hire, into the taxi side. Because ride share is designed for me and my next door neighbor to come downtown and do a carpooling. So I have a real difficult time in terms of the definition. Is there a better way, I mean, I know we talked about the TNC, is there a better way to actually create a definition in such a way that maybe we can lead the state in terms of what's, how to accomplish this?
What we do now in the city of Orlando is we regulate, essentially, we regulate drivers and vehicles. We really don't regulate companies in the non-metered side. In other words, so if you wanted to come in and have a limo company, you could get your business tax, you know, receipt, and then come in and buy however many permits you want, put them on the vehicles, they'd be safety inspected, your drivers would have permits. But you don't have to have a company. A limo driver can come into the city, get their business tax receipt, and get their driver license. And so if we were to continue that mode, we really wouldn't be dealing with companies at all. We'd just be dealing with drivers and vehicles. And that seems, so we wouldn't have to really define anything. What we would have to do is have a category or reduce our luxury passenger category and convert it to just a passenger vehicle category. They're regulated identically, limos and luxury vehicles now. We could have a third, we could call it something else, or we could just reduce the number for luxury vehicles and call it passenger vehicles. And I think that that, in terms of being able to do something pretty simply in the city of Orlando that falls within what we're doing now, in the non-metered industry, we just regulate drivers and vehicles, the safety of the drivers and the vehicles. So you could go either way.
One last question. I know that we, and we touched on it briefly, I know that we have said in the city of Orlando that we're going to regulate the number of cabs that are, that are working within or in Orlando and working outside. The idea being that we kind of regulate those licenses. I didn't notice a proposed change, I guess that's just an implied change here, that we would abandon that formula that we have for taxis.
Actually, I don't think we ever discussed doing that. I think we discussed that there would be, the metered side would stay, I think, we all talked about it, stayed pretty much the same. The regulations on the metered side staying pretty much the same with the cabs in place and operating as it does now. The non-metered side, now, some folks who maybe, so you could expand your fleet either way, or you could come in, but you would have to be operating as a non-metered vehicle to do that.
But you couldn't, you couldn't expand your fleet today based upon our formula?
No, you would have, you could only add non-metered vehicles to your fleet. So we didn't talk about, and nobody really requested that. So at present, we were just talking about moving things around on the non-metered regulation side.
Okay.
With a few things that the metered cab industry had asked for.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Jody.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, sir. I just have two questions. With the Uber and the Lyft providing insurance, is that a million dollars per ride or per driver?
It's, I guess it's per ride. It's a million dollar, it's first dollar coverage for the passenger from the time that the vehicle is engaged. So when the driver hits the app and says, I'll take that call, then their first dollar primary insurance will pick up. And they have some other insurances in place also, but that, right now, it's the job of our vehicle for hire unit to make sure that whatever insurance is in place meets the state requirements and, and our requirements, that we can match it to the vehicle or the driver.
Okay, thank you. And the other question is, the reduced minimum fare is, I saw that was for the luxury and limo, but is there a minimum for our regular metered taxi?
There's a minimum only in the sense that the rates are set. So there's a first mile fee that is, I mean, is a minimum. So I suppose the first mile fee is the minimum, but the fees are absolutely set. There's no deviation from our fees. So in a sense, we have both a minimum and a maximum on the taxi cab. So we protect people at both ends. And in the limo area, there's only been a minimum. So the non-metered area, we've only had a minimum. The current minimum is at this $35 mark, which is, you know, maybe high for, to allow alternative ride sharing type vehicles into the industry.
So how would that transfer over to the shared?
Well, I guess that's what this council would have to decide, is what would be, what if any, would be the appropriate minimum fare for whether, whether we set different ones for the limos and the luxury and the non-luxury, or whether we just set one on the non-metered side, or whether you set none at all on the non-metered side, is a policy decision, I think, for this council. And we've gotten a lot of input on that, that, and cities are doing all kinds of different things in this area. The last one in the, in the box was New Orleans. They just passed an ordinance on Friday that I, that is interesting in how, what they did was, they did $15 for regular passenger vehicle, $25 for SUVs, $45 for luxury vehicles, $75 minimum to the airport unless you were in a SUV or luxury vehicle, and I think it's $90 minimum to the airport. But that's, that's the most recent city that's come up with. And they're, and very much the rest of their ordinance is like, is like ours, their restrictions are like ours. But everybody's trying to find the happy medium where you maximize the alternatives and you don't drive anybody out of business, and you maintain safety for your, for your community and your citizens.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ains?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Jody, for your presentation, as well as you too, Deputy Pigman. But you know, you started out saying that Uber is already violating the law here in Orlando. So what are we doing about that?
Well, the police department has issued citations, I can tell you that. So they are, we are, there is enforcement, currently ongoing enforcement. As you know, the vehicles for hire unit is populated with not very many enforcement personnel right now. But they are doing sting operations. There's some stuff going on at the airport. They have a little bit better ability to figure out who is operating illegally at the airport than we do in general on the streets. But there's current enforcement. It's not an easy enforcement. But I think that, I think that both companies have indicated a willingness to try and work within the system if we can make some amendments to our ordinance that will allow them to operate. And so I think we're in this period where we're doing, we are enforcing our ordinance, we are doing sting operations, and the police department could tell you a little bit more about that, although I guess they don't probably want to broadcast the specifics. But I think that we can have more intense enforcement in the future, once we get through this period of sort of exploration about where we want to end up. But there is current enforcement.
So we require all taxis in Orlando to be permitted?
All vehicles for hire.
All vehicles for hire. And to go through background investigations and all of that?
We do.
And that includes our small taxi companies?
It does.
Individual operators?
Yes.
So why is it that the company Uber and anybody else don't want to be regulated by the city of Orlando as they come in to operate as a business? Because it's almost like some other businesses saying, well, you know, I don't want to go through your permitting department to build a building, and I'd build a building and not be required by the city. So when you come in and you're already thumbing your nose up at the system and the city as relates with abiding by the law, I have real problems with that. Because, see, your concern is not about doing the right thing. And you're trying to cherry pick those particular riders that are out there, specifically those that have a smartphone, those that have, you know, credit cards. But when you get into areas where you've got low income areas and they don't have smartphones, you're not going into that particular area. So automatically, it's discrimination on that end. But when we are here doing the right thing, this is the kind of thing that concerns me. And that all of a sudden, we've got all of this hullabaloo about a company coming in that don't want to abide by the law. And I think we just need to be firm about that. And even with the, you mentioned about the airport too, and I know that, you know, the airport has issued a cease and desist from operating out there, but they're still operating. And so how do we really enforce that? Because, you know, my, my background is law enforcement, retired captain with the Orlando Police Department, 30 years in service, and I'm for enforcing the law, you know, from that perspective. And obviously protecting the rights of the people and protecting the people from any hurt, any harm, and trying to, you know, maintain some existence in our city that's going to be good for everybody. So we really shouldn't be having a conversation about what do we do about Uber or what do we do about Lyft. It should be that if they're not abiding by our laws and regulations, then they shouldn't be operating in the city of Orlando. And that's plain and simple. And then we need to be a little bit more stringent when it comes to enforcement efforts to make sure that they get the message, because it is about doing the right thing. The other thing about reducing the minimum fare, of course, you know, in other cities and that kind of thing, they are right at $35, $40 for the luxury vehicles, and that's pretty standard throughout. And I don't see a need for us to reduce any minimum fare. $35 is still relatively cheap, you know, from that perspective. Because it is about businesses, it is about an opportunity to operate and make profit as a business, you know, from that perspective. I do really support the requiring of the NCIC background check. I think that's where we should have been all along, because we don't know who's coming in from other areas and what type of backgrounds that they have. And they might escape us from only requiring background checks from Florida Department of Law Enforcement. So one other thing that I wanted to also, I talked about the smaller taxis, they follow the law. So why can't this one big company throughout the United States follow the law here in Orlando? And I don't think that we need to bend over backwards, you know. But what we do need to do is make sure that they are following the law here in the city of Orlando. as relates with the smart applications, I think it's a great idea. And it does look good. I've seen some of this demonstration of this application in Chicago. One of the Uber representatives explained that and showed that to me, and I think it looked neat and everything. And obviously, our local company here, Mirs, they've adopted an app too, so, and that's great. That's what business is all about. You make adjustments and, and you compete. But that's the key part for me, is competing on a level playing field that's equal and just and right for everybody. So I think that's the way that I really feel about this. As it relates to outside the door on the car with rates and that kind of thing, I don't think many people pay much attention to that. Because once they get inside the car, then they're looking for, okay, what that rate thing is. And, but hailing the taxi in Orlando, yeah, I've done it too. And Mayor, don't hold it against me, but I did get a ride. Thank you very much, Jody, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheen?
I had a couple of other follow-up questions too, Jody. On the airport issue, can they determine who picks up on their property? Because in, is it private and, and public? Because is it private and public? Because I mean, I know some hotels, they'll have a line of cabs outside, and how does that work?
I think we've got the go of folks here who can explain it better probably than I can. But they do, currently, the metered cabs pick up at a designated area. And, and they have some other areas where, where transportation network companies could be directed to pick up fares. There are revenue issues involved for the airport, and I think they've been talking to the providers. So I'd, you know, I'd rather let them sort of talk about that, since they're here.
Sure. And we've talked a lot about other ordinances and other cities and how they've dealt with it. Is there, can we get a rundown of like the best practices in some of the other cities? I know, it's just...
I haven't found any really good ones, although I'm kind of enamored of New Orleans right now. So that just passed on Friday. It's the one that's looking good to me right now. But the problem with best practices is the environments are very different. So in the Northeast, you have people who sell these taxi cab, taxi medallions, and that medallion, the ability to operate, goes, gets passed and sold, and they're valuable in and of themselves. We don't have that system.
Right.
So whatever you do with a taxi. And there's some cities who don't have, have not had really the general regulation that we've had. So when they bring a rideshare company in by an agreement, I wished I could find, and I thought I could in the beginning of this, so you're seeing a failure. I thought we would find something that was going to be like brilliant, and everybody would say, oh, yes, that will work in the city of Orlando, and we didn't find that. But, but we do have a couple of models that...
Jody, maybe you can just put together four or five that are disparate, you know, showing...
Alternatives?
Yeah, different ways that...
I can certainly do that.
I mean, that's how, when I've written ordinances for other ordinances, that's kind of how I've approached it, even from the chickens, you know, for goodness sake. I look at what other cities were doing and tried to adopt best practices. I know it's a silly one. I picked a silly one on purpose.
No, that's, no, that's fine. And I can certainly get some, some ordinances to look at.
And to, you know, to piggyback on what Commissioner Ainge said about the building permits, I know there's also apps now about people selling food out of their homes, you know, this, this, this media thing now, you know, do we really want to have people opening restaurants out of their homes? Do, you know, we had a guy doing a medical office out of his garage that was recently arrested in Kissimmee. You know, those are the kinds of things that I have concern with about public safety. And, you know, there's reasons why we have zoning ordinances and things like that. It's not to try to prevent competition or cool new things. It's, you know, there's a level of public safety too. I mean, do you really want to just eat food that someone's prepared and not had any health inspections? I mean, there's all kinds of other issues that we have to consider when we're dealing with public safety and health. And something else that I had a concern about, I know that we, we recently went back on the vehicles for hire amendments because people were driving with DUIs and suspended licenses and things. So, I mean, it's not that we're not trying to be cool and vibrant, it's also that we've had a problem in the past with even taxi cab companies having people in their employ who had DUIs and suspended licenses that could have presented, you know, an issue with liability. So again, it's not, you know, those are things we have to deal with in terms of safety and making sure that, that the public's protected. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. I thought I'd weigh in since the airport, which is a key component of this, is in District One. But thanks to you and your team for your efforts. And look, my thoughts are, I'm all for competition. I think most people are, because at the end of the day, if you have a good competitive balance, the consumer wins. And so I think we want to keep that in mind as we look at this. The other thing I like is that we are in fact looking at the ordinance, and to me, any time you look at an ordinance, one of two things can happen. Either A, you're convinced it's correct, and you've confirmed that you've, you've got a good ordinance on the board, or two, you make changes for the positive. So thank you guys for doing that. One of the things though, that I would ask you guys to keep in mind as we pursue this is, I think Commissioner Ainge has it right on this one, and that is, I have a bit of concern that whatever rules we come up with and change and modify, how are these other companies going to adhere to those rules? We have rules now, and they basically came in and said, eh, we know you have rules, but they don't apply to us, so we're going to operate anyway. And so I have concerns, and I will state my case, before I'm committed to changing the rules, I need some confidence from these companies that they're going to follow whatever we decide. Because so far, they've demonstrated that they don't want to follow the rules. And the other part is the airport. It's a big component, it's not the only component, but there's kind of two issues, and I'm sure Phil and his team will share those with us shortly, is, to me, one is safety. Tourism, like it or not, is a, you know, I call it the golden goose right now, and that's a key component to what we have in our, in our economy. And I think there's a sense of, of safety and comfort that international tourists have when they come here, that we have done some things to protect them and their families as they come through our airport, jump in a car, and go to their destination. And the final thing I'd say about the airport too, I think it's key to keep in mind, the airport's going to keep growing. We know that. We're going to get bigger. And one of the keys to making it a positive experience for our guests is the efficiency of coming through the airport, getting in a ride and going. And right now, as we all know, when you go to the airport, there's departures on the top, arrivals in the, in the, in the center section, and, and ground transportation on the bottom. And I think the reason, and Phil will probably confirm it, is it helps us with the flow of traffic to, again, make it a positive experience when people come and go from the airport. And I have a concern if, again, we have cars picking up and dropping off at all sorts of spots at the airport, that long-term, that's going to be a challenge. So I'd, I'd ask you guys, as you look at that, to, to keep that in mind, that I think it's key that we have our guests experience a positive attitude when they come through our airport, because we have a ton of people that come through there. So thanks, Jody, to you, and Jody, to you and your team.
Thank you, Jody. I think that brings up Phil, or Marcos, or both. Sorry to spring it on you, but I know you've been grappling with this as well.
Not my first rodeo, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Marchand is here to make sure that I don't misspeak. Thank you for the opportunity. If I could, let me give you a little bit of background so you understand how we operate at the airport. First of all, you can't operate a for-hire vehicle at the airport unless you are permitted under Chapter 55. So that's principally the reason we're here today. Beyond that, we have what we call ground transportation rules and regulations. We have them posted online, they're pretty thick, we've got people to monitor them. And the reason we have the regulations is not because we like to regulate, but it's really some of the points you've already heard today. Number one, we're concerned about the, the safety of the traveling public. There were, there was a time in 30 years ago, 35 years ago, when you didn't regulate, and there were some horror stories about operators that were less than reputable, that were picking up people at the convention center, they would pick people up at the airport. So that became one of the things that we focused on to basically preserve our brand, the Orlando experience. So safety was an issue. As Commissioner Gray's already noted, we have some issues because there's a limited capacity we have for pickup and drop-off. So our regulations really regulate the pickup. So all the for-hire vehicles that operate at the airport operate, we regulate them, we try to recover the cost of investment, because the curb that we have is pretty expensive to build, it's pretty expensive to expand as well. The other issue is that we sort of bifurcate our operations into on-demand, that is, that somebody can come off of a plane, pick up their bag, and walk out, and get on a vehicle on-demand. So we, we compete that through a concessions process. We do that usually every five to seven years. So we go through that, and then we've got the pre-arranged vehicles. And for the most part, I think, based on our discussions, and we had discussions with Uber last Thursday, Mr. Marchand and some of our staff have also had discussions with Lyft, is that most of the operations, at least as I see it, that Uber's talking about would fit into that for, that pre-arranged, because they're, we're looking at that application as ability to do that. So that's sort of the overall framework of how we operate at the airport. So we've got passenger safety, capacity allocation, and revenue is, and recovery of the cost that we've already got invested is sort of the primary issues that we have. So just by the fact that they're not permitted by the city of Orlando, anybody that's operating, and there are Uber operations and Lyft operations we think are going on at the airport, now they're in violation. They're also in violation of our, our regulations. We have a process where violations can be appealed, we have notices violations. At the last board meeting, our board authorized a $250 fine for violations, which we hadn't had heretofore. So that's really what we're looking at. We're looking at everything you've talked about, technology, we realize, everybody's going to have to focus on technology. But principally, we want to make sure that, number one, that whoever operates, operates as permitted under Chapter 55. And secondly, that we have an ability to ensure that our passengers have safe travel, recourse against folks, because we have a complaint system that we can follow up on, and we can follow up on drivers. So we want the insurance, we want everything that you already talked about under Chapter 55, to ensure that the rights of the passengers and the welfare of the passengers guarded. So that's sort of a broad overview. I don't know if you have any specific questions about how we operate, but we are cooperating with Deputy Chief Pigman, OPD, in doing some enforcement. We will continue to do that. We have issued a cease and desist, and we're prepared to take further action if necessary.
Commissioner Ainge?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, sir. How are you?
Good morning.
I just wanted to kind of follow up with the cease and desist, and I know that you've issued this. What type of response did you get from Uber or any of its representatives reference this particular letter?
I will speak to Mr. Ainge, to Uber, because I was in the meeting. I'll let Mr. Marchand address Lyft, because he was in that meeting, I wasn't. What we, what I heard in the meeting with Uber is that they're, they want to come in compliance with our rules and regulations. But we've already also heard that they have some concern with the, the minimums that are required under Chapter 55. So they think, we think that we have, we have a transponder system. That's how we regulate the pre-arranged for-hire, that we either issue a transponder, for the most part, people already have the, the Central Florida Expressway transponders, and they can access, because where you access for pickup at Orlando International Airport is what we call the fourth curb. It's interior to the airport, it's on the other side of where you normally see the buses on the first level, but it's all covered. But that's a transponder, they have to go through security inspection before they even get down there. But that's how we, we meter, if you will, the activity down there. And the way that we charge is we have an access fee, which is $3.15 per vehicle, and then for every hour after that, we have a, what we call dwell time, which is $2.65. The most, for the most part, these types of vehicles, the TNC vehicles, would probably be paying per trip about $5.80, because we don't envision them having a long dwell time.
In, in, in real time now, can you check and see if Uber is actually violating your cease and desist?
Well, we know when they're coming around, and we try and check, because we've got our ground transportation people, as well as some people from operations, as well as we have had a secret shopper that has run some of that. So we know that they're in violation of the regulations, we've got documentation on that. The challenge is being able to, because we're not law enforcement, and if you don't have OPD there and a basis to stop them, it's very difficult for us to pull somebody out of a car and stop them. So we've got, that's a balance we have to be careful of, but we can tell, because we can see it on the apps and we can watch out there, and they've...
And that's all simply I was asking. Now, if you can see it on the app now in real time, can you tell us here that Uber is violating that cease and desist order?
I can tell you the vehicles are there, can't tell you if they picked up, because they don't show necessarily the pickup on the app.
Okay.
I just got an email while we were sitting here, that Friday, the airport staff issued four notices of violation, some with respect to Uber drivers and some with respect to Lyft drivers. So the answer to your question is, that's a Friday, yes, there were Uber and Lyft vehicles unlawfully picking up at the airport.
Okay. And then also, you know, you've got the cell phone area for people to wait until the flights come in and that kind of thing. So are they operating out in that area as well? Are you aware of?
We're patrolling that, they're not permitted to operate in that area if they're a for-hire vehicle. We have an area that we call the taxi hole, where they should be operating from. So our operations people monitor that pretty closely and watch that. I don't know if we found any violations, but we have signage up in the cell lot, as well as on the curb, about these types of operations.
Okay, because you do have a contingency of OPD assigned to the airport out there. So we want to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing as far as enforcing the law.
They're enforcing the law, but sometimes there are things other that go on at the airport that, that require their attention. But yes, sir, they're, they're out there, and we've been very happy with the cooperation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Phil, how, Phil?
Sir?
How do you train or educate vehicle for hire drivers as to the rules and regs or what the procedure and process is?
We actually have an orientation that we try and put them in. I mean, you do, we do it at a company level, so there's a company permit, and then when they have drivers on, we take them through a little orientation, give them a package. Because when they operate, and they don't operate within the regulations, they're subject to violation, and for some people, that's their livelihood, and a lot of people, that's their livelihood. And so if you're in violation, we can, we can trespass you and keep you from operating on the airport for a period of time.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about the Lyft or Uber driver that's only out there once, you know, coming in to get...
We touched on that. That may be a challenge, but I think it's still important, because if you've got rules and regulations you have to follow, you want to make sure that, that everybody is aware of them.
Right. Commissioner Stewart?
Yeah, if I follow along, two key points. The transponder that you talked about, it is, they use the existing...
You can use, we have one that we can sell them if they don't have one from the Expressway Authority, but that's how you access the pickup.
Same way we do the Sunpass and going through the, it's just, that, that's the, that's the charge vehicle, the, the charging mechanism.
That's how we regulate and find out how much time that they've spent in the pickup area.
Okay. And then, and then the, the inspection of the vehicle, because of the nature of where it's going, then you have an inspection of the vehicle. I know that you guys are checking mirrors underneath and all the rest of that stuff. I mean, that's, that's because of the nature of going down to the bottom.
Right. You're underneath the terminal, that's a requirement of Transportation Security Administration. So any, any vehicle that goes underneath the terminal is subject to search.
Okay. The trespass, I mean, here's what I'm, I feel a little bit like Commissioner Gray. I don't have any evidence that the people that we're dealing with will adhere to the rules that we have. That's a concern of mine. Because you make all the rules you want to, and if they're not going to adhere to it, then why, why do we even discuss it? But the idea of trespass, because here's a crazy idea. You catch an Uber guy underneath, you trespass him, and then you have no way for him not to go to passenger pickup and rendezvous to pick up somebody still. I mean, I guess you could, you could catch the, you know, the tan sedan coming through, and if you could catch him, you could do something else with him. But I mean, he, you've trespassed him from the airport, but you've really trespassed him from the transponder and the inspection, he still can drive through passenger and pick up somebody.
He could, by the way that they, they tend to operate their vehicles, because there are not any identification, which is a requirement that we have, that there has to be some exterior identification of the vehicles. And we've talked to Uber, at least when I was present, about a way that that could be accomplished. And we haven't talked about pink mustaches or anything like that, but, but it is still feasible for someone to get on the second level at arrivals in a, what has the appearance of a personal vehicle and pick somebody up. The only way that we know right now, I mean, we're trying to do a, a joint effort of having the Uber apps and following that, but also it's just plain vigilance, having somebody out on the curb watching.
I'm, I'm curious as to how, how you're, how are you catching somebody? Is, what, you know...
We have to observe.
We...
Yeah. Commissioner... Tell me, tell me how you do that without disclosing any kind of secret.
No, they know, it's, no, it's not really, yeah, it's not really a secret. Basically, what we have is we have people signing up with their credit cards, asking for a ride, and, you know, when they show up to give them a ride, OPD and our ground and, you know, when they show up to give them a ride, OPD and our ground transportation enforcement people are there, issue them the appropriate documentation for citation or a notice of violation.
So then they tag, so now, John Smith gets a tag, we catch somebody, and then they tag John Smith as a bad guy, and now all of a sudden, you've got to go back and get John Doe to now sign up again and do the same thing over again to catch?
That's, that's exactly right. So it's a, is a time-consuming process. I will tell you that we have thought about filing a lawsuit with respect to Uber and Lyft. We want to wait to see what the outcome is of this process, so that we don't get ahead of the city. But at some point, we're going to have to come to terms with either compliance or non-compliance, and not this sort of, we're going to comply with a little bit.
Now, the last question is, as I understand our current law, and it would apply to you, so maybe between you and Jody, if I pick up somebody outside the city of Orlando and drive them to the airport, I, I'm not done anything, the guy pays me 30 bucks, I drop him off, I go on my way, there's no violation, no violation from the city, no violation from the county, because the county doesn't regulate it, no violation from the airport, correct?
We don't regulate drop-off.
I understand, I understand. So I mean, so I get 30 bucks and I drop off, okay? That's what is gets set up. That guy circles back around and picks up somebody on our property, and all of a sudden, we've got a different kind of issue.
Yes, sir.
Because he's now in the city of Orlando, picking up a passenger at the airport, and now in violation of all the other things that we've talked about.
Your regulations and our regulations come into play.
Right, right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. And I think that's probably the same case with just regular taxi drivers that talked about picking up in Orlando is what we regulate, not dropping off in Orlando if you pick up from outside. So if somebody from Lake Mary can pick up, drop off in downtown Orlando, not a big deal. We can't, we don't even know it exists, as far as we're concerned. It could be a private taxi company, we don't know anything. When the guy turns around and picks up and drives outside, then all of a sudden, we have a, we have an issue.
Or drives inside.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you.
Commissioner Hill, then Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, sir. This was related to the orientation, I want to piggyback off of you, Mayor. Maybe on that proposed changes, Jody, I saw it wasn't there, is orientation on any job that you go to or you start, you don't know the rules and regulations and policy of that job. So maybe in that orientation packet or class for Chapter 55 and with the GOAL regulations can be installed in, when they get that contract with Lyft or Uber. And I am, like my colleagues, very concerned about safety and the Level 2 and Level 3 background checks. I think that must be implemented, to make sure we know who's driving our citizens. And that local office also being intact, so that we can have, like mirrors and most people stated, some point of contact. But I'm also more concerned, just as concerned, that we don't be left behind, because we are a progressive city, with the other 200 cities worldwide that has gone forward with this competitive company, or companies. And also, I haven't spoken with Lyft, nor Uber, or any other shared companies, but I have spoken with some of the cab drivers. And they're concerned, which I'm listening to, and I haven't made a decision on any of this, because, of course, we have to get more information, is that now they're able to bring a few dollars home outside of just paying the cost of driving the cabs. So I think that's something that we need to also consider, is our citizens, and also those cab drivers that's out there driving daily, and only being able to afford to drive the cab, but not being able to take their families on vacations, or do different things, because they're not making a sufficed amount of monies. So, that's my, that's my short synopsis. I do agree with my colleagues about the safety and insurance of those drivers and those cabs, and of our citizens. But I also want us to consider the people that are driving, our tourists and our citizens here in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe Commissioner Hill already addressed one of the items I was going to ask about. We have heard from the different industries, but we, I have not heard from the taxi drivers themselves. How is this affecting them? How is this, what kind of impact is this having on them? I'd like to hear from the actual taxi cab companies, those who are legitimately doing business in the city of Orlando. How is this impacting them in terms of, as Commissioner Hill said, their income? What is this doing to them? So, do we have anybody who can speak to us about that?
We'll probably have testimony. We're going to have one more public hearing before we bring an ordinance forward, so we're going to invite the appropriate interested parties to speak at that hearing.
Thank you. Just have one more comment to make, then. We're not, we're not after anybody in particular, we just, I believe we live in, as much as I'm not into government controlling every aspect of life, in our citizens' life, I believe we have to have some fundamental rules and regulations. And I believe that by having those, we can survive, and we can have competitiveness, and we can have a government that works. And the city of Orlando has proven that we know how to do business and how, how to work. That's why I like to say that we're the epicent of the world. But at the same time, we can't allow for people to take advantage of that. We have to continue following the rules. I'm not against anybody trying to bring business to a city of Orlando, I just want those who want to do business to do it by the rules, to come and talk to us, to do things right. You know, if we still have Uber vehicles out there, and the other companies trying to do business illegitimately, why not cease, stop, and let's go ahead and sit down at the table, as I believe we're trying to do now. But until then, stop doing this, because you're affecting lives, you're affecting people who are out there trying to make a living legitimately. You're also putting the government in a, in their, in the need of having to do some of the things that are affecting the pockets of our citizenship, because every time we have to go and investigate, that's money that has been used from the citizens of the city of Orlando to investigate this crime, or whatever it is that you guys are doing. So please stop, and let's wait until we dissolve, I mean, we resolve this issue amicably and legitimately, as mine. I say that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Byron, you want to come up and talk about next steps?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. And essentially, I guess we can bring this to a close. One, let me thank the Commissioners, this is exactly what we were hoping today, and that is to get feedback. This is the first opportunity collectively to hear from you on this topic. We've gathered a lot of information, you saw, you got a sense of the results of extensive amount of research that Jody has done. And our next step, and what we'd like to do next, Mayor, is based upon the comments that we got today, we would like to develop that a little further. Let us then go back to the industry, I know there was a comment about that, let us have another industry meeting, so that we could hear from the industry, and let us collect that for you in anticipation of then coming back to you on October 20th. And then do a second work session for benefit of council, we can share the findings of that, and begin to fine-tune into a very specific proposal, a recommendation to bring forward at that time. That would then, that work session on October 20th would be the basis for informing the drafting of an ordinance. And regardless of where council ultimately lands on the ordinance, I do want to point out that one area that's loud and clear, and that is, we need to address penalties, as was pointed out. I think we have a fairly healthy and robust system with respect to the rules and regulations involved. Perhaps it's the consequences. So to take from your, your comment about building permits, well, there are consequences, and we have the ability to do something about, you don't get your power, is the example that may and is used. So there's a consequence to that. And so, at the very least, we anticipate that we'll be working on that penalty portion of the ordinance, which leads to discussion at, subsequent to the October 20th work session, where we'll bring an ordinance based upon those final comments, which there will be the two public hearings that the mayor commented about. In essence, we aren't trying to squash public comment or negate that, and I want everyone to know there will be that opportunity as well, in addition to staff engaging at another industry meeting, and then at the time of a public hearing, there'll be two public hearings, and obviously, as you are very familiar with, opportunities at public hearings for, when the ordinance would come back, for public testimony at that time as well. So that's the plan, that's what we'd like to propose, Mayor, in terms of the steps for coming back. We're open to if there is any tweak to that, or anything you'd like for us to do different with respect to that process of collecting information, doing an industry meeting, preparing for October 20th work session, in which we'd come back at that time with, with a little more finality to this.
Okay. Commissioner Shan?
I just, you brought something up, Byron, that I, that just triggered something in me, because you talked about the other penalties that happen if someone doesn't build a house without a permit, or something like that, that we have, we have enforcement authority. So if we're going to work on individuals, and then this is state law in terms of license revocation and things like that, is there something we can clue into that if we're going to start having to regulate individuals? Is there a way to clue into that, so that we can know, because I think people take it very seriously if their license is revoked, and then they can't get the ability to pick up theirs and things like that. Is there a ability to, to link to that?
I think...
Think we'd have to investigate?
Investigate that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because like I say, if we're going to go this individual place, and we're looking for a way to, and my other colleagues have talked about enforcement, the ultimate enforcement, I think, of a driving infraction is to lose your license. So that might be something that we need to look into, so. Okay, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Stewart?
Along the same lines, let's go back to the enforcement side. They are violating city ordinance today. And I guess the assumption is that we're going to continue to enforce that until such time we have another ordinance in place. That's, I guess, that's kind of the key, right?
Absolutely.
And so, I'd love to hear back from you, how, how that is, how are we doing on that? Or the ideas that we decide that we're going to set a moratorium for, you know, 30 days? I mean, what I'd like to be able to do is, I like to have Uber and Lyft say, you know, "Look, we're going to not work in your city for the next 30 days until this is resolved." Until then, guys, you know, that's, that's not what they're doing. They're coming in and saying, "We're going to do it, and we're going to force it down your throats." And I do want high technology to kind of take advantage of this, but, but I have some real concerns about half the people that, that don't have smartphones, that you're going to take cash, that they're going to be on demand, that they're going to be in areas where, where, where I wouldn't normally pick up if I were a rideshare kind of guy. I mean, that's, that's where we, as a council, have to kind of make sure that we're, we're putting our energy in. But, so until we kind of address those kind of issues, I'd love to have them come back and say, "Look, we're not going to operate for 60 or 90 days while you do this, in effort of good faith." Or we say, "Bag it, we're coming after you," while we're doing the same thing on the other side. I just don't quite know, we just need to be pretty serious in enforcement, and they need to be pretty serious and responsive, the fact that they do want to do the right thing. I just see, I don't see that compliment on both sides in terms of the action. I see them talking, but I don't see that action on the other side. So that's, you know, just a personal comment, and I just want to make sure that we're going to do all we can in enforcement, till such time that we have a different ordinance.
We have been enforcing all of our laws and regulations, as we do with any other area of the city ordinances.
Byron, Jody, Chief Pigman, and all the staff that have been working on this, I appreciate your efforts. There's a lot of information out there, this is certainly new technology, a realm that has just sprung upon us in the last six months or so, I guess, and a lot of thoughtful comments and questions from council as well, I appreciate that. That's why we have workshops of this sort, and that was perfect, in my mind, in terms of the exchange of information from staff to city council. Obviously, public safety is our first priority in everything that we do. So as we progress in these discussions, that will be the single most, single biggest priority in terms of whatever we do from here. We want to evolve, we want to take advantage of technological advances, we want to be a city that's on the cutting edge, but we also want to be fair to people who have lived under regulation, vehicle-for-hire regulation for three decades, and make sure that there's an economic balance in this as well. So I don't think we have this completely sorted out, but I will call the Mayor of New Orleans and thank him for maybe giving us a roadmap to look at. And we will come back for a second work session in October. Thank you, Byron.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that, our workshop is concluded. Thank you for tuning in, and thank those of you who attended here today.